Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of October 22, 2012. Will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yeah. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Thank you, public, for which this stands one nation, God, indivisible, ever being just.
Will the clerk please call the roll? Commissioner Ferris?
Here.
Commissioner Turpelle?
Here.
Commissioner Roundtree?
Here.
Commissioner Tapking?
Here.
Chair Reynolds?
Here.
Thank you. Now is the time for public comments, and I don't have any. Or is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to something that is not on the agenda? Okay, then we'll continue on with item number five, which is written comments, announcements, and continuances. Mr. Town?
I had nothing at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Well, we'll start with our hearings, and would clerk please open case 6A. Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider agenda item 6A regarding case SUP 2012-70136. Applicant MetroPCS California LLC, request to allow the installation of a wireless communications facility consisting of a replacement light standard of similar height with six panel antennas at the CLU football stadium and associated equipment in an above-ground enclosure. Location, 160 Overton Court. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Lynn. Would you like to give the staff report?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Member of the Planning Commission, for your case this evening is a proposed wireless communication facility on the light pole at CLU's football field with equipments at an above-ground enclosure. Location is at the west side of the football field at the north campus of CLU, which is north of Olson Drive. For property zone PL, public land, wireless facilities allowed in PL zone with a filing of SUP application. There previously two existing wireless facility has been approved at the south campus. Both of the antennas are located on light poles between buildings and at the parking There's another wireless application from MetroPCS that was approved by Planning Commission at the Acero site back in March, and that's located approximately about 1.5 miles to the east of this present location. The application has been through city's plan check and is ready to be issued. This proposed facility, this proposed application is, will be to provide a better signal strength in the vicinity of CLU location. Presently, there are six poles at the stadium. At the westerly stadium lights, they're approximately about 80 feet tall. On the easterly, three poles are approximately over 100 feet tall. The antenna that's proposed will be placed in the middle light pole to the west side of the stadium. It's located in the middle. The applicant's proposing six antennas, which is, will be stacked in two sectors, and it'll be placed in the replacement pole. Each antenna is approximately five feet in height by about 12 inches in width. The antennas will be flush mounted, and it'll be painted to match the replacement pole. The antennas would be approximately 58 feet above grade, and the top of antennas at 70 The replacement pole is going to be wider than existing, which is going to be 24 inch in diameter. The height will be the same. Presently, the stadium pole is approved for, at 18.5 inches at base and tapering to approximately about 10 inches at the top. The equipments ought to be located in the enclosure, and that's going to be above grade to the west of the field. This is a view from Bolson Road and Mount Cliff Boulevard. The proposed MetroPCS, the applicant's antenna will be located in the middle with the arrows pointing. Here's another view taken from the field. The proposed antenna will be on the middle pole, looking west. This is a view, a present view of the poles looking from Olson and Campus Drive, and the proposed antennas are located in the middle, which is by MetroPCS antennas. A separate carrier, which has been placed in the photo sims, are proposing for four antennas, four stacked antennas, which they'll be, they have submitted application, however, the Planning Commission hearing has been scheduled, has not been scheduled at this time. Here's another view from, looking northwest from Olson Road, and this is where the antennas will be in the middle of the screen. This is a view from looking east to the middle of the antenna, and this is the photo sims of the antennas to the left, as well as the enclosure, which is in the middle of the This is a before picture of looking southwest, and the proposed antennas, which is on the right hand of the, right-hand side of the screen. The location of the equipment enclosure will be placed on the right past the ramp to the left underneath the seating area. In evaluation, Resolution 97-197 requires antenna not to have a reasonable detrimental visual impact. Staff does believe that this facility have minimal visual impact, as shown on the photo simulation. The proposed antennas are approximately 630 feet away from the nearest residence to the west, and approximately over 1,200 feet to the east of the residence. There are other antennas on light poles that has been approved in, at other park sites as well. Applicant has provided eight alternative locations, and has been evaluated by the staff, as well as the coverage maps. It is, staff does agree that proposed site provides the best improvement in signal strength by, for the vicinity in CLU. Technical data has been evaluated by city's wireless consultant Jonathan Kramer, and this project does comply with FCC's radio frequency standard. The project's exempt from CEQA. Staff recommends Planning Commission approves SUP 2012-70136 based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff's available for any comments or questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. Are there questions of staff? No questions? Mr. Kramer, did you want to make any statement?
No, this is a pretty straightforward project. I did evaluate it for compliance with the FCC radio frequency emission safety rules. It fully complies. Even in taking into account the potential second carrier that may be on nearby pole, it will still comply. We'll do this evaluation again if that other application moves forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Turpelle has a question for staff?
Yes, it's for Mr. Kramer, if I could. Good evening, guys. I was looking in the packet, and there was one area that I thought might be worthwhile explaining, where you say that the, that if, and how do you say it, the Acero facility? If that is actually built, and I know there's an assumption that it will go up, is, is going to enhance the capacity rather than the coverage? Can you explain what that means?
Yeah, the quick background on this is that we did approve, we, the city approved, the Cortez de Acero site year and a half ago, a year ago, it's mile and a half away. It will be shining signal, it's not yet activated, but it will also be shining signal over towards the campus. Now, because of the distance, it will provide a basic signal coverage in the same area, but not a lot of capacity. So this particular site is, is meant to enhance the capacity directly in the area around the campus, and it also extends the service to fill in some problematic areas to the west over towards Wildwood. So, while either site could provide basic coverage, both sites together provide the coverage and the capacity, and, you know, a college site like this, obviously their, their interest is providing a higher level of capacity right in the immediate area of the campus.
Could you define capacity then for us?
Sure. You could have five bars on your phone, but your call still wouldn't go through if there's not enough circuits. Consider a capacity to be a number of circuits. Basic coverage, shared amongst a lot of people, means a lot of coverage but low capacity. So what they do is they come back and they add more cell sites and reduce the coverage area of each, and that way they, they actually increase the capacity. So this type of site in conjunction with Cortez de Acero, this enhances the capacity around the college and provides some basic signal service west towards Wildwood.
So, in other words, allowing more people to be able to be on the phone at the same time, sort of?
Exactly.
Okay. I only have one more question, if it's okay? And this is for staff, I would guess, because I know that, and it was very useful when staff did this, when you put in the elevation of the proposed site that's not before us. I think it's from, is it a Verizon tower that's on there? We cannot bring that into any of our decision-making tonight, can we?
Yeah, I'll answer that. It would not be appropriate, because it's, it's just at the application stage.
Okay, that's what I thought. That's it, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, staff? Then I'll go to the cards, and we have, the spokesman for the applicant is Mr. Alexander Liu. If you'd come forward, state your name and city of residence, and you have 15 minutes.
Thank you, and good evening, commissioners, staff. I'm Alexander Liu. I work for Core Development Services. We're representing MetroPCS. My, I live in Brea, but as I said, I represent MetroPCS. So essentially what we have for you today is a SUP application to add antennas over at Cal Lutheran University. We've worked in hand with representatives from Cal Lutheran and also with staff to come up with this design. As Mr. Lynn had indicated, we did, we did analyze multiple alternatives for this site, found this to be the best design that would provide our desired levels of service, which would essentially increase, once the Cortez de Acero site is on air, it would increase service levels from an in-vehicle signal level to an in-building service level. So, being a, being as part of a network, ideally, we'd like to have in-building levels of service throughout our network, so this just helps to, to achieve that goal. It's, it's been a great process, working with staff and with Cal Lutheran, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have of me regarding the project.
Are there questions of the applicant? Mr. Liu, I see that you also have a Brian Chavez here. What is his specialty?
Yes, both Brian Chavez and Doug Nguyen, they are the RF engineers that helped design this particular site, as, as well as the, the other sites in Thousand Oaks as well. So, they're available here if you have any specific RF-related questions.
And do any of the commissioners have RF questions? No, thank you very much, and you will have the right of rebuttal at the end of the hearing.
Thank you.
And I also have a card for Valerie Crooks. She's from the Cal Lutheran University, and she's here for questions. If there are questions, the representative, I can call her forward. No, I guess not. So with that, we'll go back. Oh, I don't have any other. I, oh, if you'd like to give the card to the clerk? Is there, if there's anyone else in the audience that would like to speak, you're welcome And you each will get five minutes to speak. And we have a card from Deborah Handelos. If you'd like to come forward to the microphone, and you do have five minutes. And would you state your name and city of residence, please? Thank you.
My name is Deborah Handelos, and I reside at 39 East Lucero in Thousand Oaks. I just had a few questions. I'm, I'm not, I'm for the antenna, but I have a couple of questions. One of the pictures that brought to my attention is, one of the antennas looked like there was, I mean, one of the poles looked like there was four antennas, the other pole looked like there was two. So I would like to know how many antennas on those two poles? One of your pictures, Joey? And then, my other question is, I know we already have wireless antennas in the parking lot of CLU. Mr. Kramer talked about that mostly, this is, if I understand correctly, your statement about that this is mostly for CLU to have the capacity. I would like to know, are we considering capacity other than CLU to cover other areas? And because we already have an antenna there in the parking lot, I think that's with singular or AT&amp;T or, I'm not, I'm sure, but I'd like to know if they could let us know, or if you could let us know, because I've been reading files, the last one was denied on a Lynn Road in 2005. How many, and it stated that it was, there was already approval for these antennas to go on CLU property. They hadn't been built yet, but it was approved, and I'd like to know if the commission has any idea, or somebody can tell me, how many more wireless antennas are we, is it, is CLU approved to have on their property? And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, will we go back to staff? We'll have your questions answered. I don't have any other cards, so we'll go back to staff at this time. Mr. Lynn, additional, or would you answer her questions, please?
I think I'm going to do the, the first couple of questions to address this Handelos, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, her, her questions. There are some antennas in the parking lot of CLU. The equipment is actually behind the entry monument, and then the antennas are on a, on a short light standard in the parking lot. That's an AT&amp;T site. So, as a reminder to the commission, the FCC and the courts, well, the courts and the FCC have both told us that when we look at the coverage over an area, we have to look at it on a per-company site. The reason is, if you've got Sprint, you can't go onto an AT&amp;T site. If you've got Verizon, you can't go onto a, well, you can't go onto a AT&amp;T site. So, the courts direct us to look at the coverage of a specific company and its, in the context of its own coverage, which is why we talked about the other site tonight, the Cortez de Acero. Now, in terms of the other antennas, she had a question about the number of antennas that are being proposed, and leave for the metro site, we're talking six? Six antennas total, and that's in configurations of two groups of three. The other site that was shown in the sims, and we wanted to make sure that you had a good understanding about what this might look like in, in build-out potentially, which is why staff went to the extra time to, to add those sims for the other carrier. We don't know if that's going to be the actual number of antennas, or if there were, if there will be fewer antennas when that's built out. But the number of antennas that are approved for CLU are the number that you actually agree on, because each time a project comes forward, you review it. So there aren't, at this point, I don't believe there are any pre-approved antennas that have not been constructed on the campus. I'm, I'm not aware of any, and I don't think, you're not aware. So, any other antennas that might be proposed for CLU, including the four that were, or the group of four that were proposed for Verizon, would always come before you, would, they'd come before the planning commission.
Mr. Kramer, you said that three are being proposed now, but I only see two, or are they, two on one of these, and then one on another, or?
Well, the way that's worked is that the antennas are shaped in 120-degree orientations. So from your photo sims, you're only going to see one or two at any particular time. The third one's going to be hidden, as it were, on the far side of the pole.
Okay, okay, so there are three antennas on each of the sect, okay, thank you. So there, the other proposed one, there could be quite a few.
The reason why, and I don't want to get into the other application, but the reason why a carrier, to make the city attorney happy, the reason why a carrier would have more groups of antennas is because they would have multiple bands of service that would be better accommodated using more antennas. It doesn't mean that that's the exact number that would ultimately be brought to you, but for any application, obviously, at staff level, we look at minimizing the visual impact, and also making sure that, that we're meeting 97-197, and looking at what the particular carriage needs are of the, of the applicant before us.
And you said visual impact, because there are also other things on the poles. I don't know what they are, but there's, most of the poles have two pieces of equipment on them.
Well, these are light standards, and, and what's being added, being proposed to be added are antennas and related equipment, but most of the big stuff, the, the base station equipment is actually at ground level.
Yeah, I don't mean that. I mean, right now, if you look at the poles out there, and I spent time out there today, and there's other equipment on these poles, so if somebody does go and put four of those on, like the photograph, even though we're not talking about that one, you can see in this first, this plan, you can see on this one pole, there are two items on that pole already. So you're talking about visual impact, and I see a lot of stuff on the poles, for a better word.
Part of the equipment that's on the poles now, and they're on every pole?
No, not every single pole, but there is equipment on, and I don't know what they are. If there's speaker things, or, or something, I don't know what those things are. If you look over the building, I don't know what it is, but I noticed on several of the poles, and they're, they, from sitting in the parking lot or standing, they look like they're, you know, a foot to two feet apart on the poles, and I just thought, you're talking about visual impact, and I see stuff already on the poles, and then you're adding more, so.
Right, the, the, the lights themselves that are at the top of the poles?
Right.
Have control boxes.
Oh.
And the control boxes provide for the electrical connections and so forth. Those poles are actually put in and maintained by a, a third party that, that does all of this work, and those control boxes simply allow them to, to route the energy up to the lights.
Okay, I didn't know if they were speakers or something like that. Commissioner Roundtree, did you?
Just, being at the game Saturday, I thought they were possibly speakers from the public address system.
Yeah, so there are other things on the poles, it's just what I was concerned about, that visual impact that you talked about. Commissioner Ferris?
Thank you. If I can, I just want to make sure, I don't know how clear it was for Ms. Handelos's question here.
Yeah, if she got a question.
But I think it's pretty, pretty, I just want to kind of reiterate, just to make sure. We have in front of us, there's a middle pole on the west side, where there's two groups of three antennas each. That's the application we have before us. But for convenience of an application that you know is going through the process, there's another group of, potentially, could be four groups of three antennas apiece on a different pole. That one's not before us, we're not approving it. If it does get approved, it'll come back before us. So it's just those two clusters of three in the center pole, is that right?
That's correct. That's the application before you.
Okay. Now, and I did have a quick question on the, on the photo sims. It was easier to see whenever you saw the PowerPoint move from before and after, but you can kind of tell if you know what you're looking for. The pole looks like it's completely removed from the, the simulation, and then put in a different place.
The pole's going to be in essentially the same place. That was just an issue of, of the drafter of that particular slide.
Okay, that, that's, that's fine, okay. So the simulation not completely accurate, but at least it's, it gives us an indication of what it would look like afterwards. They're not physically moving the pole?
No.
Thank you. Thanks.
Other questions? No further, and you got your answers? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Turpelle?
Yeah, I'm sorry, thanks, and, because I noticed- Yeah, I'm sorry, thanks, and, because I noticed what Commissioner Ferris saw as well. And then I was thinking about what Commissioner Reynolds was saying. If you look at the before and after, those speakers and/or whatever they happen to be existing on the pole do not exist on the after. Are they still going to be on?
Right.
Are they still going to be there?
I caught that too.
I don't know whether Mr. Lynn would want to answer that or?
That's what, why I asked that, because it caught my attention about-
You see, I'm-
Yeah. If you look at the first page of the-
The standard's going to be bigger, I know that, but are they going to be putting those speakers back on there or?
No, maybe we should have Ms. Crooks come down and explain that since the hearing's still open. If you state your name and city of residence, please, and welcome, Ms. Crooks.
Valerie Crooks, resident actually in Ventura, representing California Lutheran University, Thousand Oaks. I'd just like to clarify that everything that's currently existing on the Musco light poles right now will be on the new poles. We do have speakers on the poles. That allows us to keep our sound focused into the stadium. We have speakers on the stadium side, speakers on the west side. That allows us to maintain our, our sound levels at a fairly low level and focus them in towards the field. So, yes, all that, all that equipment that you currently see right now will carry over into the new poles. They will just be larger and have the, obviously, the cell antennas on them.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Commissioner Roundtree?
Not to put the cart before the horse, but can you tell, take us, I'm not sure this question would be for one of the three of you, in terms of the demolition of that pole? I mean, it's, it's on a campus here, we've got kids walking around. What's it take to take down that pole? Is it planned to happen during summer break, an off day? It takes one day, it takes a week? Just take me through, what's it like taking that pole away? And then the second question is, the installation of the new pole?
Right now, we anticipate that work would not start until next summer. At that point, our field will not be in use. Obviously, we're using it right now for football season and soccer. Once we move into the, the spring semester, we have intramurals on the, on the field. It's actually a fairly simple thing to take it out. They were put in using a crane. Crane will be used to just hold the pole and steady it while everything is disassembled. The light arrays come off the pole, that the pole comes out. It gets handled with a crane. The crane sits on the, the west side of the field, so fairly straightforward disassembly. The foundation will have to be replaced because it is a larger pole. It is going to be a somewhat disruptive operation to the field. The carpet will have to be laid back in places potentially. Obviously, the decomposed granite that we have on the west side of the field's going to be disturbed, will have to be put back. So, I believe the university is hoping to have all of the work done on both the poles at the same time. Both carriers are going into the same building. That'll be the little building for the equipment enclosure that'll be constructed, so that's all going to have to be coordinated. Right now, as I say, the earliest opportunity would be next summer.
Okay, during summer, though, there's a lot of camps, soccer camps.
They don't go on the, on the artificial turf field. They tend to be on our natural fields, our, our natural turf fields more.
Okay, questions answered? Thank you very much, Ms. Crooks.
You're welcome.
Back to staff, if there's anything additional before I call the applicant back up for his rebuttal time? Nothing else, Mr. Lynn or Mr. Kramer?
Yeah, just responding to the number of applicants, there is a, another applicant is shown on the, on the second pole. That would be the only applicant that, that's in the city's application currently.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions to staff? Okay, then I'll ask Mr. Liu to come back up to the microphone. You have five minutes and once again, state your name and city of residence for the record.
Alexander Liu, in Brea, representing MetroPCS. Great questions all around, great clarification. One thing I'd like to add for Ms. Handelos' information as well, if for whatever reason, and not only just for this project, but for any development project in the city, conditional use permits have a, have a use-by date. So typically, if they're not, if no action's taken within about, typically about a year and, and staff, Mr. Lynn, if you could correct me if it's not a year, no, it's three years. Three years for, for Thousand Oaks. If nothing's been built, if they haven't pulled permits for it, then their approval is null and void essentially. So, if there were ever further carriers down the line or in the past that haven't exercised their development rights, then they would lose them if they haven't exercised them. So, that being said, I hope, I hope you all have the information for you to, to grant a favorable decision for this special needs permit on behalf of MetroPCS. With that, I have nothing else to add. Thank you.
Any other questions? The applicant? No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I would hope that Ms. Handelos does live within the area, that she would be notified of any other hearings having to do with, anything to do with Cal Lutheran. So I don't know if she, if she's within the, the radius or whatever, so. Since she seems to be very aware of what's going on in the university and she's interested and I think it's important that she does know. Okay, with that, if there aren't any other questions or anything, I will close the public hearing and this is the time for discussion, deliberation, emotion. Commissioners, Commissioner Chappell?
Yes, Commissioner Reynolds, the, I think the staff, once again, did a very good job. I really appreciate the, the photo SIMs. They really help you visualize what is going to be there. So with that, I'd like to go ahead and move that we approve SUP 2012-70136 with the conditions that you find in your packet.
Discussion of the motion? Any other comments? Commissioner Ferris?
Thanks, I'll support the motion of, you know, I've seen a number of these applications come before us in, in the past years and sometimes these, these things have arrays of horizontal panels in which you've got that big triangle. And so this is a, you know, of all the times, of all the types of designs, these are generally the best ones, trying to make it least visually disturbing, I guess, that, you know, and I think that they've done their job with respect to section N of the alternative site analysis. They provided alternatives that would work, but this is the best one and I think that that serves the intent overall of what 97-197 has, so I support the motion.
Any other comments? And I also will support the motion. I do appreciate the staff report and especially the alternative facility location table that, to me, that's always interesting and I think it's something that is good in our packet and it was easy to locate. So with that, I'll ask for a vote unless the maker of the motion has final words. Okay, please vote.
Motion passed, 5-0.
And there is a 10-day right of appeal period on this and we'll continue on with the community development department reports and referrals. Mr. Town?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to draw to the commission's attention, on page 34 of your packet this evening, our upcoming hearings. At this time, we do not have anything scheduled for November 19th. Something still may come up and so we're leaving it open. However, we do have hearings, as you can see, scheduled for December 10th and December 17th. And then on page 36 of your packet, a couple of cases that the commission recently considered. One was the Miller Ranch Project, which will be heard by the city council. That's a project up at North Ranch, will be heard by the city council on November 13th. And then the Batia Case, which the commission considered on September 24th, has been appealed and will be heard by the city council early in 2013. And then a third item I just wanted to mention, sort of excited about it, and that is that today I went to an award ceremony of the American Planning Association along with staff member Heter Alawami and we met Mr. Rick Lemo and two members of the RRM Design Group at a conference of the American Planning Association at which the city of Thousand Oaks won a statewide award for the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan. And this is, is quite significant. The city had won the Tri-County Award for this project, but this was a statewide award in the hard-won victory category, which was appropriate given that the city and the private sector had worked on and off on this project for approximately 20 years. And it was the last focused five years of that effort that resulted in the downtown specific plan and, and I really think that it's something that this commission should be proud of. Many of you considered that, that document in its draft form and provided a recommendation to the city council, including comments on it, which were incorporated. And that final plan was then adopted by the council and now it's won two planning awards. And so, very excited about that and we will relay that information to the city council as well. So, that's all I had, thank you.
That's great, thank you. Minutes and resolutions of the meeting of September 24th, 2012, a motion to approve both. Commissioner Ferris?
Move to approve minutes.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion passed, 5-0.
And are there any AB 1234 reports? I don't think so. Commission comments? Commissioners have any comments? Other than everyone should make sure that they remember why we celebrate November 11th, Veterans Day?
Question.
Yes, Commissioner Chappell?
Just looking and maybe I overlooked it, because I know we approved the minutes, but we were, were we supposed to adopt a resolution?
We, I said minutes and resolution of September.
Okay, all righty. I'm sorry, thank you so much.
Um, were you, you didn't miss any meetings, did you? No, we weren't short. I was thinking, if you do miss a meeting, you need to abstain from voting for that meeting, so. Okay, any other commission comments? Then we will adjourn to November 19th, 2012 and as I said before, I hope everybody observes Veterans Day. There will be a cemetery, uh, cemetery, there will be a ceremony at the Canal Creek Park North, the MOWW, which I belong to, always has a really nice program that day, right there at the pond, where all the plaques of the military service is, so. With that, we'll adjourn to November 19th. Good night.